So.
There's something on the computer, you gotta wait ten seconds before they. Stay here.
All right. Right. Good evening, everybody. We'll call this meeting of the Buckfield Select Board to order for November fourteenth, twenty twenty-three at six thirty-three P M. And first of all, I wanted to welcome Peter Fickett here. You got elected. The seventh, yes. Congratulations and thank you for joining the board.
Thank you.
Back up to five members. In a very well-run election, by the way, looking very nice in here.
So we're getting pretty good at it. It seems like we've had like twenty of them since. Never ends.
Yeah, no. All right, we do have a core, all five. Uh, old business railroad bed. Trail maintenance.
I'm sure where. So the board had asked me to add this to the agenda for the fourteenth of November to discuss future options for cutting back some of the owner growth. Um, so. So we've got landowners and we've got snowmobile club. Here tonight, so.
Did Weldon have any thoughts on it?
I don't know if that's Weldon.
We were gonna.
I said he was gonna join up. On Zoom.
I'm here.
There, now I know who it is.
There, we changed your name.
Uh, so as we discussed before, there's, there's no plans right now, um. To do anything, uh, but it's something that's gonna need to be addressed at some point. And. I just think it's good to have an open discussion with the public about it.
Yeah.
Ideas from you. Ideas from Weldon, um.
Any thoughts, Weldon?
Well, uh, my thoughts, I guess, are, are, uh, how much? How much time do we have to, to maintain those? Trails, if, if that's something that. That, uh, we're being asked to do and, uh. Um, we were looking for an alternative, uh, Cam and I was, that's why we contacted the Forrester to. To see what our options were. And, and we, we found a very inexpensive option for the town to. To cut those back, um. Uh, I don't really. Think that, uh, it's anything Public Works is gonna have time to do anytime soon.
Yes.
So. Since we talked about this the first time. True, sorry. It's kind of exciting. I can at least hear it when it's under my coat. Sorry. Um. I went down and spent some time on the railroad bed trail and. Really looking at things and, and wanting to understand it. And then I came back and asked Cam a lot of questions about, um. The purchase of. The property and what the town owns and what we say what the town owns, we're talking about all of the citizens of Buckfield. Um. And then being cognizant of the fact that there are people who live. On the trail and, um, I wanted to understand the. Easements. That folks had, um. And then Cameron and I spent some more time down on the trail looking at things and. Because what I'd share with the board and, and with anyone is. It's my understanding that the town. Um, at the direction of the. Community members purchased the railroad bed. Trail from. Sumner. All the way down to. High Street and then it picks. Up again off of. One seventeen.
You know, we have so far.
And then pass self pond to the Hebron line, um, and that the intent. But why the town purchased it was for recreational use. That there were folks who had an easement to access their homes, but the town purchased the trail for recreational use. And I would think that is our responsibility to maintain the trail for recreational use, as that was what folks. Wanted the trail for, um, just looking at the section. From High Street to Sumner, there are clearly some areas where trees need to be cut back. Um. It's my understanding that the town. Owns thirty-two feet each way from the center, thirty-three feet, sorry, thank you, thirty-three feet each way from the center of the road. Cameron went out and measured and pointed out that, um, along much of the railroad bed trail are stone walls. So, um, at some point, somebody took the time to build these walls to mark. Um, to the property line. There are other areas on the trail where there aren't the stone walls, but. In many places that gives you an idea. Because I think that the trail or the roadway may have shifted a little bit. Here and there, um. It would behoove us not to say, okay, we're going out thirty-three feet from the center of the road that is there, because that may not be the exact. Property line, because the road may have shifted slightly, um. The community may want us to survey that whole area, but I think that would be a costly venture. So perhaps if we looked at. Um. Adding, let's say, twenty feet from center or twenty-five feet from center. That would give some leeway to make sure that we don't go on to anybody's property. One of the things that I think needs to be addressed, and I don't know how much of it we should address tonight. Is as you head down, there are many places where the trees are painted. And there are no trespassing signs. And the town didn't put those up and the town didn't paint the trees and we can't. So in some ways, somebody is indicating to the community that they cannot use the land that they own. So my thought was, and I did ask Cameron if it. Feasible, doable to, um, research and find the, how to get in contact with all of the landowners. Who have land that abuts the railroad bed road, because. I'm gonna go out on a limb and guess that it's those folks who have marked. The town property and ask them to please remove signs and cover the colored paint with, I'm thinking brown paint. Um. And then if they want to mark no trespassing or no hunting, they can certainly do so on their own property, but that we. No one should be indicating to the community that they can't use the land that they own. Um. And that it should be the responsibility of the people who did it to. Fix this rather than asking. Folks that work for the town, um, there were also some areas along the road that, um. There was one place that perhaps there's a building that may sit just slightly. On town property and maybe it's in construction or. Under construction, so maybe talking to those folks to say, could you shift this a little bit? It, it looks at this point that it could be moved. Um, but to have that discussion because. This is the town shouldn't build on somebody else's property, um, they shouldn't. And then there. Were. At least fifty trees that have been harvested from town property, um, so looking into. When that was done and. Done relatively recently, um. The one that was done and I believe is the forest ser- what's the title of the? Person? Forest Service?
Recent Forest Service?
Main Forest Service, um. So somebody from the main Forest Service will come in and look at it and. Give Cameron more information. For us to better understand where we should go from there. Um. The other piece to this is, so if we look at it from a standpoint of using this for recreation, one of the. Most popular winter recreational activities is snowmobiling, and this is the I T S, am I using the right term, trail? There is. An area where there is an I T S trail established to the side of the railroad bed trail. Where people plow. Um, and if I'm getting this wrong, please, um, so even though the road is plowed by the folks who have an easement to access their property, there is still. A, a trail that is, I think, room to maintain. By the folks, the snowmobile clubs for the snowmobiles to use. Then there's a stretch of road where it is plowed, but there is no. I T S trail. And. I know that snowmobilers are used to, you know, crossing a road or covering a short distance. I don't know what would be considered an acceptable or reasonable distance. To plow the I T S trail, because that's essentially what's happening, and I believe that you're not supposed to plow I T S trails at all. So I, I don't know how to come up with a compromise or a balance there. And then it. So that's probably. Five hundred yards.
You know, I, I can't.
You guys, we've been doing that. Athletes. Many years, it's, it's probably a couple hundred yards.
Okay.
No, let's guess, and I'm up. It's not a huge distance.
And then from there, all the way to High Street, it goes back to being unplowed. Road and then that's the I T S trail. So after spending all this time out there and looking at all of that, I, I just think it's important that we get the information from folks who maintain the I T S trail, who use the I T S trail, um, to make sure that we are. Maintaining this for recreational use or the recreational use that the, the community wants. While at the same time being mindful of the folks who live there and have easements. To their homes. So that's the information that I have. Thank you. Thank you.
I'm, I'm confused, though, like, I thought. There was an instance one couple of years ago that, you know, somebody had blocked off their property that they, they, the, with a trail, because we let it, for a few years, we let everybody go through our property. And then some of the people that owned it locked it off. And I told, I think it was Pete, I said, um, I said, they blocked it, blocked it off, they're not gonna let. People go in there. So Anna kind of plowed into our driveway and, and, um, so, you know, we kind of went and had a, like, a meeting and they said, no, you can't, that's. From Anna's place up, um, she can plow, but you can't plow there. That, that is a recreational trail. So I was told when I came and asked. That railroad, railroad bed road is the recreational trail. That, and that's, that's right, like, that, isn't that right? That's, that's the trail is.
So, May, so my understanding is that, um, that it was purchased as a railroad bed. Trail and that when the information went for signage, somewhere along the line, somebody made the error and used the word road. Um, so it's become known as the railroad bed road, but it wasn't purchased as a railroad bed road, it was purchased as the railroad bed trail. So the entirety of the railroad bed trail that is owned by the city, by the town of Buckfield, the people of Buckfield, the entirety of that. Is a trail. And is part of the I T S system. Um. And is intended. To be used for recreational pers- purposes for the town, that there are people who own. At the time that it was purchased, if I'm getting this wrong, please correct me, there were people who had easements. From this trail to their homes at the time of the purchase, and since then, other people have purchased and have the easements. I'm not sure how it, it appears to me that it was worked out. That in order to plow the road, there needed to be. A shift for the I T S trail. Because that should not be plowed, and that's why there's that side piece. Nobody on the railroad bed trail needs to. Allow any recreational vehicle or any person on their property. But from the center of the road out thirty-three feet in each direction. The community may use that entirety for appropriate recreational purposes, um. And that includes, there were some areas and, and I'm going with, people just weren't aware, people, I, I, in no way do I think anybody intended to. Keep things from citizens, but if. There are some places where there are, um, chains or gates that are closer. They're on town property. So any place that's chained or gated off, those chains or gates need to be at least thirty-three feet from the center of the road back.
No, the, we bought the property from the logging company and, um. And. And I, I know the logging company. People cut down a lot of trees very close to the road and at the road and. And, you know, I haven't spoken to them, but I would think a logging company would know where and. Where and where they cannot cut, I, of, of anybody, I mean, more so the logging company than anybody else. So that's. You know, I, I, I really.
You think, but somebody didn't know.
They're caught every day cutting over.
Yeah.
On the other property. They don't, some do it intentionally, some do it.
And you can tell by looking at the cuts that there are some places that were cut a long time ago. And I don't think, but it's not up to me, it would be up to the board and up to the town, how far back you want to pursue this, um. But there are. At least fifty trees that have been recent. Recently cut down that.
Is that the ones that have all the orange X's on them today?
Yes. So that was in two thousand twenty.
That was before you guys bought the property.
Right, I mean.
And you can actually, I, I went out and I might be able to pull it up on this computer, um, I used your entranceway, the old road that goes out behind the field as. Cause it's the clearest place I could take a straight measurement from the center of the road. And if you. When I marked it out, if you turn and take a picture right at the line all the way down, you can see that they knew what the buffer was. But they reached over it. And again, that's, that's not on you guys, you bought the property after everything had been cut. Um.
So. Though those X's, like, when I saw them today. I, 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 I didn't, I, I didn't know, like, oh, my God, is something happening to us again?
No, no.
And, uh, because town, and I know I've mentioned this before. But we've had some really serious things happen to us and I, and I'm thinking, oh, my God, is somebody really trying to get us to sell this property or is somebody really out to get us? So, but if, if that's truly the case, that you were just looking at the stumps and finding out which, you know, um, that makes sense, because I thought we were being targeted again.
We walked with a tape measure and we marked, and not all of them, we couldn't find all of them, but we marked. This, the stumps that were clearly within the town's property, and we also noted all of the trees that. Some that belonged to the citizens of the town that were spray painted and all of the no trespassing and no hunting and no all of these signs.
We did put up some, yeah, we did.
So we're just going to ask that people move those signs back.
You're not the only one.
Uh, no, pretty much everybody does.
Yeah, and, and I think. Oh, sorry. The, the X's we put on were more for our visual and for others, other visuals, so people can see. Like, when we had the conversation in October, we were talking about it, um, and people had heard rumors of what we were gonna do and all this stuff. A lot of what I heard from the, the meeting was, um. People didn't want us cutting trees on, on their property, and we're trying to demonstrate to people that we're not cutting anybody's, if we were to cut, I'm not saying that that's what they're gonna do, but if we were to cut trees, we're only cutting trees that are. Owned by. People of Buckfield, it's, it's. It's a sixty-six foot swath all the way to Sumner, um, you know, the road shifts a little bit, so it might be a little less on one side, a little bit more, but if you, I mean, if you go no more than twenty-five feet. One way or the other, you're, you're pretty much within that boundary. And if we were to have somebody like Weldon, when we were looking at auctions. And have somebody that comes in, same thing, you said, you know, they should know what, what they're supposed to cut, they're supposed to mark everything out, and they're supposed to, you know, adhere to that, because if there's a tree right on somebody's property line, you know, like, we share a tree that's half and half.
Right.
We have to get your permission to remove that tree or vice versa.
Right.
Um. So. It just happened to be, your property was the most recently logged one. So it was easy to see.
Cause I'm, we're driving in today, I'm going, fuck, you know, and it was just our property that was locked.
It was, it's not your property that was marked.
Well, it was the town.
Yes, it's in front of it.
It floored it.
But I just wanted to be clear that we did not go out marking somebody else's property. It was important that. For all the people listening. To know.
But we had a meeting. With Mark. Two weeks ago, yeah. That one area where the snowmobiles have to go on the trail where there's not. We're. You know, we told, we showed him. After that, one ravine. There's an area that they can go. To reconnect to that other part where the snowmobiles go on.
Less than our travel on the block.
Less, yeah.
The only place that they probably have to go on is where the ravine is, there's no way to.
Yeah, we have to go a huge bridge.
Yeah, some of those ravines are a bit tricky.
Yeah, so is that place? Do the snowmobilers stay on town property there or do they go on to somebody else's property?
We have to measure, I don't.
Okay.
The way they're showing me, it would be supposed to be any of his property or property or the house.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think the logging, because I think the logging. They made trails all through there, the logging company, and, and you could see where they kind of went through, and that's when we said, you know, with the, with them driving on the, on the. The, the, the plowed road, if they can come in right after the ravine, like, we met with Mike and we, you know, spent some time with them, we said, come, come in and kind of, you know, kind of go by the road and, and go.
That's, particularly if it's your property that is really generous and. People appreciate that. I think that. If we do go that route, that we should get clear permission from you on what's allowed and what's not allowed, and people will need to respect. What you're allowing, um, and.
I mean, I think we could technically do it without even going on their property.
You probably. And that, that would be great.
Cause I think the majority of our trail, except for where we go through Bill's not, Bill Nice Land. The rest of that trail is all on town. Now I realize what the down was, because we hugged the road the whole way, right to Mainers Pit where we hit Summer Line. So Bill Nice Land is the only land we go off on a private property for. Hundred yards. And then we come right back on, so.
Is that the town line? Mainers Pit, is that the, is that the?
Town line is right where you dive down into the pit.
Okay.
That's right where the town line.
I was trying to look at it on the.
Yeah. Right, it's really hard to see. We should mark that someday. We knew where it was, so.
But I think that's a good idea, so people who are using this area recreationally know this is what's owned by the town and. That they need to respect the private property beyond those boundaries.
And I tried to tell snowmobilers to use the trail, not the road. Even though they do go down that road a lot, I prefer that they go. But I can't, I'm not a lord, so I can't stop them unless they bounce as they can right on the road, they have to be on the trail. I just try to tell them, please use the trail if you can, stay off the road, but.
Well, for their own safety, I mean, it's.
Right. It's hard to stop. Car vehicles, plows, it just doesn't work well, so. So. Yes.
Just one question. I plowed the road on the last house, um. That's how that works. Am I supposed to get the town's permission to cut tree branch? Along the side of the road? Cause I'll be honest, I haven't, I didn't know.
I mean, I. Yeah. There's a tree branch in the way. Like the snowmobile club, if there's a tree that's getting ready to, you know, they, well, they have our continuing permission to clear that up. I mean, if you, if you need to. Clear a branch or whatever, because it's in your way, that's one thing, um, you know, cutting down a.
I don't cut down.
A tree, uh, yeah, I, I think that's what we're saying is just call the town. Especially if it's a hazard, I mean. We can probably have Public Works in that case go down and take it down if it's, or if somebody from the snowmobile club or somebody could take it down without somebody getting hurt.
But I think if there's a branch that's going into the roadway. Yeah, certainly.
High branches are overhanging, they break the air shield.
Yeah, I noticed that going down there today, especially when it gets to us now, it's really bad. Okay.
Yeah. So. Thank you.
I'm kind of curious, so does the town own property or just kind of like the right of way?
No, we.
Sixty-foot right away or is there lots of?
We purchased the land, we per, it's sixty-six feet wide, there's two parcels, there's the one that heads down to the summer line, and then there's the one that goes up to South Pond, we actually own the land, so it's not like. The road and then we have the easement that we can install or ditch and, and do that, so like, we, we physically, we actually own. That property.
Cameron, when you explained it to me by comparing to the soccer field. That, if you want to use that example.
What did I tell you?
We own the trail, just like we own this, the town owns the soccer field, it owns.
So.
The, so it owns that trail, it's not, it's not a road like High Street is a road, it's a piece of property owned. By the town that used to be a railroad bed.
Right, and you know, it's like sixty-six feet doesn't sound like much, but if you take a fifty-three foot tractor trailer and then add the tractor, I mean, that's about sixty-six feet.
Oh, yeah, sixty-six feet is a lot.
Yeah. It's about where the pavement starts at the back of the building to just almost the edge of the building, the sixty-six feet, so it's hard to see when there's, you know. The geography of the ground, you know, it, it's just. It's hard to see when you're standing in the room.
That's a lot, that's what, like, the posted signs, I can almost see why they put them outside, because they want people to really see them, because they put it twenty feet in the woods and no one would really see it.
Especially where the town had cut that one section. No, ten, fifteen years ago, I, I don't know more like that, but when they did that last, that's all overgrown to the point where it's just small little trees and they're all jumbled together, which had we. Maintained that down, it would have given a clear, but. It never got done after that, so.
Because if you talk to most people. Who use that trail. For horseback. Bicycle, K T Vs. Can I talk about going in? Thirty-three feet, um, but people are going. That would destroy that whole trail.
And I don't, I don't think we'd ever, we were never exploring cutting all the way to the property line. That's not what we're, that's not what we're looking at. And, I mean, in order to make it so that it worked, we'd have to cut some. Because, I mean, you gotta, the logger's gotta be square at the end of it, you know what I mean? If the town's not paying for it and they're just giving them the wood in exchange for the work. Um, but I mean, there are clearly a lot of trees out there that, I mean, I think there's one, and you might know it, it's literally almost growing in the road. And you might know it, it's literally almost growing in the road, it's right there. And it would be impossible for them to have even cut that in most of the places anyways, because they basically would have been grabbing from the rope. They wouldn't, they can't go down into the ravines, they can't. But. I guess my question is, how long do we? Can just let it keep growing before it becomes a much bigger problem that? I mean, it's already, you you went down there with me in my truck, I mean, the whole way down, it's just branches and branches and branches.
Even on horseback, it's not a pleasant ride anymore.
Yeah.
Ducking dodging. I I don't see this being something that we do before this winter.
No. It needs to be on your radar so that we can figure out how we're gonna do it.
But next spring and to get some bids and see what companies realistically say. They would need to cut in order to break even and then. Give feedback from people as to what's the best.
And then the other thing too is this, when when the trees are so. When they're so compact like that, they strangle each other.
Yeah.
So if you can allow some of those more mature trees for not, you know, for getting to that point to actually get the sunlight and to grow, I mean. Yeah, over time, it's gotta look a lot better. But if we just don't do anything, it's 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 not.
Yes, you had her hand up first, I'm sorry.
Oh, I just say, are you talking about like the, like from High Street to, um, like where the Lynn Road is? Cause I think that's is a, that's where the most is coming over, right? Is that what you're talking about?
That section's pretty thick and pretty.
Because even it hits the cars when we drive, is that the part you're talking about?
That's part of it, uh, but there's also, there's there's areas all over.
Yeah.
You know, going both ways and both directions that I could use it, but the thing is, if we if we have somebody come in to do it. They can't just cut down trees that are this big, because they won't get anything, I mean, other than chips. So there has to be some sort of give or take. And I don't like, I think at one point you were talking about, we hadn't even, Walden and I, when we were looking at options, hadn't even gotten into, well, how far are they gonna cut? We hadn't even talked about. One way or another, but. I don't think there was ever any intention of ever going thirty-three feet.
And we had talked at the last meeting that whatever the decision is, should be from one end to the other.
Mm-hmm.
So whatever, just for the street, it would go from High Street to the.
Spring Street.
But still I, I'm very.
Across from Bill's house, the same, Bill's camp. Same, Bill's driveway.
Okay.
Right directly across that, or they go down the bed.
Oh yeah, there's a camper job.
Camper down there, that's town.
Oh, you know, where that camper, where she go down, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, uh, in terms of the cutting and uh, what a forester might do, there are obviously areas of cutting. You know, the trees for the lumber value, but in terms of like all of the brushing and that sort of thing. Would we be looking for a forester who will do both or is that gonna be a separate cost?
Well, I would think, yeah.
I would think you, yeah, and I think they were gonna make off cutting the wood, they would chip the other stuff and make some compensate, you know, kind of like a wash, basically.
I think what we'd have to do is have conversations with, like you said, companies to figure out what they would need to do.
Yeah, get some quotes out.
Make a decision on maybe.
And you might go to talk to Sumner and continue on to Spring Street. Get with the same logger, if Sumner was on board.
Yes, ma'am.
The last, in my memory, the last time this came up. In terms of town on grouchy, it's over by the baseball field, long story short is. If you called the main state forester department, they would say. Call the Oxford County Main State Forester. Now that used to be Merrell Ray, but currently it's Mike and I cannot think Mike's last names. But they. As a consultant will come and walk that whole. Wherever wherever the town property is, they will walk the whole thing and give an assessment. I think before you can put out an RFP to any logging company. You know, once you all make your decisions and stuff. Um, I think those decisions are are based on what the main state county forester could advise. And he goes all over Oxford County, so like you were saying. You know, that give and take with the chips or with big trees or just little trees, you know, that kind of thing. Well, has it has a list that he provides to the town, he won't select for for you. But has a list of working foresters, so on and so forth. The second thing is, if you don't mind I continue, is the building. Or social building, I forget how you said it, Sandra, that looks like it's sitting. Maybe a corner across the town line, is that? Something that the code enforcement officer. I don't know if it's a new building or an old building, it sounds like you guys don't know if it's a new building or an old building or what stage it's in. But why are we not using the code enforcement? Officer to go out there and look and see what's going on?
It it looks like it could be a portable building or somebody's building something that then they're planning to move somewhere else. Still sounds like a code enforcement officer, so I, and I don't know, we would have to measure, we would have to, this is just something we saw. And so it is something where it did, it was identified today, yeah, so going forward.
Down the corner of High Street, right as you go in?
Yeah.
I'm suggesting that that's uh, land use if you, or it may just say, hey, can you move this three feet and just. Ooh, sorry, and then it's fixed. And then that was the third thing I was gonna say, no matter what you do, in terms of, you know, because it sounds great that. That you all working with Mark and what, you know, like everybody's working together. But I think over my years here, this is not the first time this has come up. So I would strongly recommend that whatever is decided between the snowmobile club in the town. The private landowners in the towns, that it be put in writing, so it's on record.
Agreed. Yeah. So where do we go from here? You want to?
Uh, this was really just, I mean, it was a discussion item.
Yeah.
Um, you know, transparency and.
Yep.
To get ideas and hear from people.
So I I think that may answer your question.
Yep.
It folks agreed for Cameron to, um, contact landowners. And just kind of clear that all up. And. To make sure that we revisit in the spring, how we're going to go forward to maintain the trail for. The use of the community. Response, I believe that the snowmobile. Folks, um. Am I correct that there are guidelines or I don't know what it is for maintaining ITS trails? That there's a certain.
When it gets bad enough in a section, we'll get a crew together and we'll brush. We do it like we'll pick a section, South Palm, and we'll get a weekend, we'll get pole saws and chainsaws and tractors and brush it out.
So that the.
Then if that were to get any worse from High Street in, probably this winter, next winter, next summer, we'd have to brush it, at least from there towards the high school. We do whatever we do to maintain our trails to keep what we could do workable.
So that area, that's the ITS, because Buckfield is.
Because we will get written up if there's excessive branches into the trail and it gets too narrow, they will suggest we make it better, so.
And just like I said, I got limited resources too.
Yep, except we're all volunteers, we just get a whole crew together and sometimes we'll grab the ATV club to help us and. We'll just blow a section out in a couple days and. And live for four, five, six years and I know it hasn't made it worse since they cut it.
Yeah.
When they cut that left side, everything came back in a hurry. When you have a canopy, things don't come back. But then again, they don't dry out either.
Right.
So you have a, looking at both sides of this, if you cut it back and keep it maintained, the sunshine comes in. And it's drier and better. But if you have a canopy, the sunshine doesn't come in, the stone doesn't melt, so I. Literally, so we're just happy to be able to use land and just get on our freezer land for the. And we're on board with whatever anybody needs us to help with, but.
All right.
All I would tell now, we just maintain what we done, we just got it, when we have a tree, there's a couple trees leaning. On the other side of, had a high street last year, they, so we just got them all.
So maybe that's what we put that at this point, agreement with the folks who maintain the ITS trail. For the sake of transparency and clear and who's doing what, if somebody's down there clearing a part of the IT. TS trail, it should be folks working with this snowmobile club, correct? You wouldn't want somebody to just say, hey, I'm gonna go do this.
Would bother us a bit.
Okay.
And like, I mean, in Anna's case, you know, like if there's something that's in the road, like I'm not, I don't think anybody's gonna hold anybody. That, you know, I mean.
It's a no difference. Cause you cut that tree for, it's bothered me, I cut it for, you know. With most, like, we have a, we have a written lease with the town, with every landlord, agreement. And they can put around their west side street or allow them to cut without permission. And I believe the town was like a eight inch tree.
So we, this is what I'm asking, we have a written agreement with.
It's a ninety-nine a year.
Yeah, this was before I came here.
So we do have something in writing.
Yeah.
And.
I think with every landlord, yeah.
Fantastic, that's what I was looking for, I I thought we already had something in writing, so we do and.
Yep, and we have a, we have a three-year. A three-year agreement with the ATV club. I think it was, yeah, which just was last year, so.
And if there was any other group or club that wanted to look at an agreement, they could certainly come and ask.
Yes, could I just add too with this point about the state forester, that might be a good place to start. Versus a logging company, just to get a more objective view, you know, balancing environmentalism. They probably understand like a trail aesthetic better than, you know, water might have an incentive to kind of want to cut cut more, right? And just getting their opinion, their feedback would be super helpful or my help to explain things to a adjacent landowner. Versus, you know, the impression that there might be some bias or some relationship that someone has with particular forestry company.
Good point.
And I don't know how far they look at it either, so getting the ball rolling on that might not be a bad idea.
I'm not gonna lie, I miss what the riverbed looked like when I was in high school. Cause I used to, I mean, you remember, we used to walk the trail all the time.
Every day.
I had a canopy back then, and it was a nice. I actually headed towards South Palm, probably has similar canopy to what it what it's, what it looked like back then. Uh, but I mean, over the years, so much of it has been cut off that it's, it's allowed that sunlight to come in, which has allowed all that growth.
Yeah. All right. So do you want to take any action on this or you're gonna move on it as you have time to?
I mean, as this, as we go through the process and we start discussing, it's all gonna be open with you guys, so.
Okay. All right, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
I can see if everybody like, with the landowners, I think the landowners, they care so much about the people. And I think it's it's just it need that respect, like we will respect you, you respect us, and I think that's huge.
Yeah.
And um, I think that's, that that's huge in my. Thought, but.
Yeah.
And yeah. You know, working with Mark, I think has been wonderful, you know, like.
Explain to her, we have nothing without her. Yeah, landowners, we have nothing. So what do we have to? Being by making anybody mad at us.
Thanks.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Solid waste committee meeting, agenda setting. And we have to select the third committee representative.
So we 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 thought we'd help you out on this one, because I knew you had to put together an agenda, so we figured collectively do it as.
Great. What is that meeting?
December.
So, uh, yeah, it's just a regular meeting time. Why, you're gonna be out of town?
No. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
Uh, so for the agenda, as I recall from the last meeting, some of the things we discussed were all stickers. Policing the dump a little bit.
So number one, um, if you don't mind me interrupting.
Yes.
The uh, agreement.
Oh yes.
Needs to be.
Oh yeah, we didn't finalize that from the.
Yeah, yeah, we don't have that signed yet, and we need to get that signed. It was brought up about transfer station sticker changes.
Yes.
I don't know how feasible that is, but it's worth having the discussions.
Yeah. Do we have those printed? Or is there a plethora?
I have a lifetime supply of red stickers, but here that comes. There's probably a lot of nineteen ninety cars that still have red dumpsters. Thank you, probably all over the state. So.
Do we find that people? Return to Buckfield to, yes, take advantage of their stickers?
Not a lot of people, but, um.
You do see out of state plates going through there.
Which, I mean, you know, you could use the drivers as an example, they they live, I think they own property in Massachusetts. But they own land here, so they have every right to use the transfer station, so if they show up with Massachusetts plate. But again, if we've been using the same dump stickers for the last twenty years.
Twenty, twenty-six.
Okay, what is that, a red sticker?
Yes.
Um, even though we have a supply, an inventory of red stickers. Is it possible to order a secondary color, green, blue or something? And rotate in June of every year, when we, you know, have our town meeting. We could have stickers available, you know, people are gonna come into vote, here's your new sticker. You know, cause they gotta be registered, so they have to be red residents. And every other year, switch colors, you know, like the license plate tags.
Yeah. I definitely think that's something we should discuss over there at that that meeting.
And I, and then by enforcement, who is going to police the dump sticker, because I don't. Think we need to put that on the folks who work at the dump, just somebody comes in, you don't have a blue one.
Yep.
We're not taking your trash today, that that could lead to some really ugly, so these are just the things. That will be discussed at the meeting coming up, not December.
Well, and it's, you you gotta think, a lot of these gentlemen have been working at the transfer station for years. And they're colorblind to red stickers, because we've had the same red stickers for twenty-six years. If, and this would just be my recommendation, if you're talking about it, is if you change them every, I don't know, two years, every year. Every year is a little excessive, but you know, every few years, that new sticker color will at least stand out, it'll be easier to identify. But I mean, you gotta consider weak budget, Sumner and Buckfield budget. To operate that facility, and we don't charge to get rid of a lot of stuff that almost every other town does.
Yes.
And if we are going to keep it affordable, we need to find a way to rein in some of the out of town. Visitors, if you will, because I will tell you. When I put forward this solid waste budget last year, I had anticipated increases because of the fuel surcharges and everything else, but. I know we got more people in Buckfield, but it seems like we're getting rid of a lot more stuff than we have in the past, a lot more, so.
Well, occasionally you see trailers pull out.
Well, I mean, if you demo your, if you do demo at your house, you you can go get rid of it, but I mean, if that same trailer's coming in four or five times a day.
Yes.
I don't see that many houses under construction in Buckfield.
Right. So anyway, yeah, I think we should look at the stickers. Uh, what else?
The agreement, um, and we were having conversations a couple of weeks ago about, like. Setting rules for the swap shop fundraising, I don't know if that's something we want to formalize. Rules and regulations for.
Yeah.
The swap shop fundraising operations, but I also feel like it would be. Good idea to have that conversation with the people who volunteer at the swap shop and involve them in that conversation, so I don't know if. This next meeting is gonna be the place to do that or not.
Maybe a good time to have, to have a discussion, to have summer, just now, think about it, because. You read the rules and regulations for the volunteers, and it's, it's like. It's not friendly. I wouldn't want to volunteer over there if I followed the rules and the, the, the recommendations that were put in place back when it was formed.
And it probably wasn't intentionally unfriendly.
But it comes off that way.
So.
Yes.
There've also been some questions, I think discussions on with. Unity members about the hours. That it's open, that for people who work during the day. I think some people have asked, would it ever be possible? For the transfer station to be open? A little bit later. Or wanting, I, I don't know, but that could be a discussion.
Yeah.
I know, I've, I've seen discussions on social media, some people have come in.
Greatest, great, because, you know, you know, finding people to work there and then. You know, it's just cost more.
The agreement, it says one day has to be Saturday.
Yep.
And then the rest of the, the other day that it would be open would be up to the um. The committee can change it. So.
And how could that be done, maybe later in the evening for just household trash, or maybe. But I can say for folks who work during the day, including Saturdays. It could be a challenge, so.
Sure.
Just a discussion.
I understand that challenge. Yes, ma'am.
It used to be winter hours and summer hours too, um, if that's at all helpful. Um, I thought there was a brief discussion about needing clarification on where. Just watch up donation money gets applied. If at all, does it goes straight to this, to the transfer station savings account? And then that is used to pay some of. Whatever bill, whether it's an electric bill or a repair bill on one of the machines or. How, how does, you know, there needed to be clarification on that.
I don't recall.
So, so currently they, they bring in their donations, which. What's on there? And then once it's deposited, it's transferred into the solid waste. Savings account, and we have a general ledger account that is designated specifically for swap shop donations. Which wasn't, it, it wasn't. Set up when I took over, I set it up, because it's, it, it's a lot easier to track it if you have a general ledger account and it's transparent. So that's how it's being tracked right now. So I mean, we can have that, I gotta do the, I gotta go over the financials and tell them, you know, what's in the account and all, all the other stuff at the meeting anyways, so. If the committee wants it handled a different way.
That's not what I was suggesting.
No, that makes sense.
Just as a point of clarification, that's what Cameron just said, that's not what I was suggesting.
And I didn't think that that's what she was suggesting, I, I'm, I was just trying to say, I've, I've gotten a handle of. How it's tracked now, so that it's easier for me to say, this is how much they brought in donations, and then if they need a trash can or they need. They need windows replaced or whatever. When I A P it out, it gets A P to that general ledger account and subtracts that donation money out of that account. And then it gets transferred back over the checking account, cause all of our checks are written out of the town's checking account, but. There's that transfer back and forth.
So my specific question is, does any of the swap shop donation money help to offset the electricity bill at the helm?
Same answer I gave last meeting, no, it does not.
Because it used to, and so is that a discussion that needs to happen with the board? Of transfer.
To keep things. Not so complicated, if the committee decides to figure out how much of that money is gonna be used to off, offset the electric bill. I would suggest that you come up with a number that is deducted from that account or that general ledger each month, e, eh, each month. Keep in mind. I have to enter. It's the same concept as rescue, I'd have to enter two lines specifically for that. And when I budget for solid waste, I budget the overall electric usage. For the entire facility, and I can't imagine that the transfer station or the swap shop uses that much electricity. It's cut, it's saving us more money than what it's costing us just by taking stuff out of the. What's that called, the waste stream?
Yes. Alright, any other items you can think of?
I'd say that's a lot.
Oh, and we need to select a third committee rep.
Real party over on the solid waste committee. Because it's the three of you, right?
I'm just the tie, I'm just the tiebreaker, both of yous are tied between both Phil and Sandra.
I'm apparently the chairman.
Yes, you are.
Yes.
So, one of you three, any volunteers?
Let's go.
Alright, thank you.
Unless you wanna be the A C O. Because it's so really fun.
Oh, we can bargain a joint. I'd rather do that.
I'll trade, I'll trade if Peter wants to trade.
Yeah. I'm okay with that.
So until.
We find somebody, yes.
Someone who's.
Yeah.
You're willing to.
I might actually have somebody that's interested, so it might be quicker than.
Called the block.
It's not a guarantee, but I think there might be somebody that's interested.
But until that time.
To fill out the application, I'm hoping.
But until that time.
Right.
Alright, I'll be solid based on.
Alright, so that's planned. Do we need to vote on that?
Yeah, make it official.
Okay. Is that, is that an appointment?
What is that? Sure, the committee, so you're appointing Heather as the third.
So we could, or here we selected. A third, to, however you wanna bring.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we. Appoint. Heather to the solid waste committee board.
I will second that motion.
Any discussion? Alright, all in favor, bye bye.
And silly eye, Heather eye, Sandra eye.
Peter eye, your first vote was on the salt.
You get to be the A C O while you're.
Yeah.
Vote on that too.
I have this question.
Yes, ma'am.
Don't you have to accept your resignation first? Or animal control.
Have we ever heard of you?
Yeah.
I don't think so.
Yeah, it is, and it, it was submitted to the state, so just roll it all up into one vote.
Okay.
Accept the resignation and appoint, boom, all done in one.
There you go.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we. Accept Heather's resignation as A C O and appoint Peter as a new A C O. Immediate.
Until which?
Until such time that we, yes, hire on a new A C O.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any discussion? The chance, alright, all is in favor, bye bye.
So yeah, I, Heather I, Sandra I.
Peter.
Thank you. Alright, new business consent agenda.
I'll make a motion that we accept the consent agenda.
I will second that motion.
Thank you, any discussion?
For informational purposes, I know I did put, put an asterisk, the A P warrant forty seven is really high. One, we didn't have a meeting in four weeks, and I also paid. Progress billing for the Bear Pond paving as well as the county tax, so that was the bulk of why that's as big as it is.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Alright, all is in favor, bye bye.
silly eye, Heather I, Sandra I.
Peter I.
Thanks. Town manager update.
Well, I was asked to take this out of the consent agenda, so I don't have the rescue, um, and public works, uh. Reports in front of me, I'm gonna turn up a copy, so you have one. Obviously, October, the Disneymont tax commitment for twenty three, twenty four was finalized on October twelfth, which I talked about the last meeting. Um, the mill rate was a, a drop of two dollars and thirteen cents over the previous year's mill rate. Town clerk did a great job preparing for the November eleventh, November eleventh, November seventh election, um, the election went off well, congrats. Peter. I updated you guys, I have not received any applications yet for animal control. In which now we've just changed that, and there's longer filling the role, Peter is. Um, I know Bob and I have also fielded some of the calls. Uh, paving on Bear Pond Road has been completed for the season, Spencer Group will be back in the spring to finish everything up, I'm pretty sure. Um, right, Weldon, you can nod your head. The town's, okay, so this is gonna be an agenda, this is an agenda item later on, um. The town's current assessor, Colin Halsey, uh, accepted a full-time position with the town of Oxford. Um, she's currently only contracted the Buckville for sixteen hours per week, that's the way it's been for the last year. Uh, people may have gotten accustomed to her being here more than sixteen hours a week, she'd be wearing more than she should have, but she was only being paid for sixteen as a contractor, cause we. Came up with a number based off of. However. It, it's pretty evident, carrying a full-time assessing position and then having to deal with the things that we have going on in Buckfield that, you know, she's. She's gonna be looking for. An exit, um, at some point, cause she can't give the time to the town that we need, and really, we need more than sixteen hours right now to get everything back to where it used to be. So we'll discuss that later on in the meeting, but just keep that in mind. Um, I provided everything to Zach at AFCO, uh, that, from the. The community engagement meeting, um, when I wrote this, I was waiting for further instructions on, on what the town needed to do. Uh, he's since sent everything to me, I've uploaded it to the state, uh, to enroll, I'm just waiting to hear back from them. Uh, they're gonna like this one, I spoke with the town attorney at the end of October regarding the petition to terminate trust for the that long free library. The petition has been signed by the former president of the trustees of that up long free library and have now been filed with Oxford County Superior Court. Um, the attorney stated, he had indicated they will not take issue with the petition, and he estimates that everything should be wrapped up by the end of the year on that. Um, so myself and Chief Dupile, and one of the firefighters will be. Going to Brunswick on Thursday to look at the, uh, the Quinn, um, project obviously is taking a lot longer than we anticipated. Um, which is kind of beneficial to us, because there were a lot of things that they didn't anticipate that have been fixed, and we're still paying the same price for the truck, so. Uh, my hope is that on Thursday. It'll be completed, or if it's not completed by next week, it will be, so that, uh, we can have it in town. Once it's here, um, department leadership will go over everything, just to make sure that everything's completely operational and there's no issues. And then begin the process of training our personnel to safely operate it. And then last but not least, I posted this on, on Facebook, following the. The shootings in, in, uh, Lewiston, both of our ambulances and Bob, uh, you were down there as well, um. I was super proud of what our, our people did down there, and I know everybody in Lewiston appreciated it as well. Uh, I think Stacy covered a little bit more in her report, but I didn't get a chance to read it, but, uh. They triaged.
Seventy nine.
Seventy nine. Walking wounded.
Yes.
So, I mean, they had a, they were, they were out all night, and, uh. Everything I heard from everybody involved was, they did a tremendous job, so. I just wanna point that out. And I, I included for all of you, just the, the petition and everything for the library, so that. You can see what they've done. That's all I got. And you have called the meeting, and the public works, and you have rescue as well, I forgot to remind fire.
Yeah, yeah, I believe Adam was down there as well.
Yes, yes, the fire chief was as well.
Yeah, so they, they, uh, I know that Buckville Rescue ran a, uh. Alternative care site. And, uh. Reunion center type area. And, yeah, they did see seventy nine people, from what I understand.
Did it awesome.
Yeah, they did, there, there was a.
Paris was over there, Paris Fire Chief actually pulled me aside, just told me that he wanted, wanted us to know that they all did a massive job.
Yeah, and during that time, uh. Pace was up here. And in mine it. Norway or North Star had come down the Turner, so there was no lack in coverage either, there was just everybody shuffled inward and. There was still coverage of horrible incident, obviously. Alright, and public works report. Uh, Bear Pond Road has been reclaimed and face paving is done. Think I saw something really nice about that on there.
Yeah, uh, it seems like a lot of people in town are, are happy with it, I've driven down, um, I think the roads. Amazing, yeah, it's.
Thank you, Weldon and your folks.
Yes, thank you, thank you, it's great to see positive feedback.
Yes, it is.
Because. That balance is nice.
Right, I think it really makes a big difference now, cause it's right from the Hartford line. All the way through Buckfield, and it's, it's actually not a miserable road to driving. Cause it was miserable.
Right. And thank you, Cam. Alright, let's see, anybody, uh, anybody have any questions for Cam, or move on? No? Alright, per the minutes, we'll be October seventeenth, twenty twenty three, select board meeting.
I will make a motion that be approved for minutes of the October seventeenth, twenty twenty three select board meeting. Now, second that motion.
Any discussions? Thank you, all is in favor, bye bye.
Sandra I.
Thank you. Backroad Buzz Medical Marijuana Retail Store License renewal.
Alright, so. Andrew's here, if anybody has any questions, but it's, um, he did get this application to meet in time with the. Our, our ordinance requires that it's submitted sixty days prior, um, and he did, he did meet that timeline, his current one actually doesn't expire till December. December twentieth, um, but part of his process to renew his state one is he has to have his local one too, so, um. I haven't received any code enforcement violations, any issues. That have been reported to me, um. I think you've been a. You've been a good neighbor. Uh, but everything that he was requiring files into your, if you have any questions, you can. Start the business side of it, if you, if you have questions for him, he's right there. He did his initial planning board approval last year, um, went through all the. The requirements per the ordinance, um, fire visited, they made sure he's in compliance with all of his, uh. Fire. His smoke alarms, his fire extinguishers, uh, he did install an aux box, so they have access to the building after hours if there's an emergency. So they don't have to bust down the door. What else? I mean, there was, there was some things that the planning board wanted, um, to do when he initially applied, he followed. All of their requests, and you know, uh, most of it's still in here, uh, I included it, the operation plan, security grain, the layout. Yeah, I think I provided you with everything. So as the renewals and licenses are good for one year, you're the licensing authority, so after that original. Planning board approval, the, the select one has to go through each year.
I'll make a motion that we approve the medical marijuana retail store license renewal for backroad buds.
I'll second that. Any discussion?
I have one question. Do we need to update it to have the current boards names?
Correct, yeah, this copy that says twenty twenty.
Yeah, the application. So why? I love the original one. Sorry, I created a new back page for it, um. And then the actual license has signature lines for you and it doesn't have your names on it, so I actually have a copy of the credentials.
I also have a question, just to ensure that everything's complete on page. This page, I can't find, see the number beside the word page. It asks for, are there additional? Federal, state or local permits or approvals required? Yes, and then it says if yes, this list. And I just don't see a list that is anywhere.
Which which video?
I don't know, it says page.
Sure, yeah, thanks.
Oh, yes. Right.
So his only other required license would be the state, which he cannot get or he can't renew until the local permit is issued. Am I correct in that? Uh, I'm trying to remember all this.
Yeah, I mean, I I'm required to have a tobacco license, a food and beverage license, and a town license and a state license.
It just asks. Because I want it to all be correct, it's asked to be listed and I just didn't see it listed anywhere, so we should probably put that in there to make sure that it's complete, yeah.
I don't even remember how that was working out.
And to be honest with you, I'm not even sure. Something was listed there last year. If we.
Things are right in there, they'll have to be some.
No, I mean. Eight license from the Office of Main Medical Use or or of marijuana program, which is what I was saying for.
Right, so last year, that's what I wrote.
Yeah.
Because as last year, that's all, I didn't realize that I needed a tobacco license to sell pre-rolls, then I realized I needed. The food and beverage license, it was like a learning curve after I got it, but I didn't get all that stuff. And I'm in the process of renewing all that right now too.
So it was already, I didn't say that it's complete, just for your file.
Yeah, so it would be tobacco license and food and beverage license also.
Subiteration form O M P.
Yeah.
Oh, O M P G L side, O M N M.
I don't know the iteration, but it's yeah, office, uh, Canada's policy.
We have the other thing that seems to be missing is the samples of the logo and label.
I'm not getting to talk as well.
And again, this is just a major, just a major thing that this is.
So all this stuff is on file.
Only very awful, I can see it on her being over there.
Hmm.
Oh, yeah.
I have.
It's like it's this period of time for all this period.
Can I do that?
Yeah, so is that the only labeling you use?
Yeah.
Okay.
On the packaging and stuff that's there anymore.
Last time.
That's on two of the pages. Tobacco license, we say food and beverage.
Food and beverage, yeah.
How long are the state tobacco licenses and food businesses or food and beverage licenses good for? A year. A year too.
Yeah.
I'm gonna pay that fee every year.
Which, and I had to pay it twice this year because when I first did it, it was only there for three more months. Alright, so then they're like, this is only good for like two months. By the time I got it, they were like, yeah, you have to redo it in two months. Because I guess they do it at the same time or every year. So. Yeah.
Good catch, thank you.
There's only. Just trying to keep these, the little things that'll come back.
That's right. Any further discussion? We're all set now, right? You got it on file, so we're we're good.
Yeah, everything's on file.
Okay.
Um, when you. Renew your um card, retail card, I'll make a copy of that.
You carry your card?
Yeah.
Your retail card.
Uh, the.
Care giver.
Retail caregiver.
Yeah.
The one that says D V A back.
Essentially have to amend it to say with.
Well.
Or can we just?
Yeah, no, you just need to prove it because it wouldn't. If he didn't renew his license through the state, which means this, in order to renew the license through the state, he wouldn't be able to operate anyways.
But I'm just saying that do we need to amend the motion to say accept? Or approve this because we made some changes to it or we don't need to?
As changed.
Uh, that's what I.
I will amend my motion to accept the medical marijuana retail store license renewal as changed.
I'll second that. Any further discussion? All in favor? Bye bye.
Zilia, I.
Heather, I.
Sandra, I.
Peter, I.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Come see me. While. Uh, this all go away.
There you go.
All right.
Right.
You have to do it tomorrow. At some point, it it's.
Working mechanic calls tomorrow, but I, we'll see how the day goes. They never go as planned.
It's it's your, it's your one year following December. Twentieth, so it's it's that following year because it requires this all to be done within six. Sixty days prior, so.
I gotta see my license because I'm trying to see this first, but the state has like a different form, I don't know.
Oh, yeah, that's something we have to fill out too.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, when you bring that to me, we'll take care of that. We're good till December twenty.
Right, well, my time on the on the fifteen, so I don't want to push my luck too much.
All right. Town assesses the planning.
So this is what I mentioned, um. Earlier in my town manager's report that I've written this, um, Colleen had sent me a message. Uh, it it seems that she would like to be wrapped up with. The town of Buckfield by the end of the year. Which is. Some month and a half of it, so.
End of calendar year.
End of calendar year, yeah, I think that's what she meant. Yeah, I think that's what she meant. With that said. I think I I had emailed all of you a copy of the uh. Cushing had a. RFP for assessing agent. We used to have an assessing agent with a board of assessors and the assessing agent would go into the pickup work. Um, and the assessment and then the assessing assistant would do all the data entry and stuff. Um. I think we should probably look at. Putting out an RFP for, at a minimum, the. The pickup work and. Try to figure out what we're gonna do for the data entry portion of it. Um, because it's it's a lot of work, especially if there's lot splits and stuff like that. I mean, if we have an assessing assist, an assessing agent. Um, previous assessing agent used to handle those lot splits. And assign new map lot numbers and do the assessments and give that data to us. Um. Colleen's been doing it all. With Clint, um, and it's just. With the last three years, the way that it's been, it's it's too much. It's too much to expect somebody to do. All while still doing the regular day-to-day stuff. It seems like everybody that sells property in Buckfield decides they're gonna split it up into sixteen different chunks and it's a nightmare. Um, but we need to figure out what we're going to do, whether that be. I don't know where I'm gonna find another. Contract assessor for what I paid Colleen for the amount of time that she was putting in. Uh, let alone sixteen hours.
Yes, Sandra.
So would it be correct to say that? What, what would you? Estimate the number of hours? That. This person actually, Colleen actually worked, because my fear is that. If we find somebody and hire them for sixteen hours a week, that even with somebody working maybe twenty to twenty-five hours a week. And maybe even more than that. We are still behind and.
So there's this.
What are we going to do to get the town caught up? What do we need to do? What can we do?
In a perfect world, those sixteen hours that I had factored in for Colleen should have, should be fine. You know what I mean? With the pickup work and the monthly, the monthly work, that stuff.
If we were caught up or even without behind.
With with an assessing. Agent to do the pickup work once a year.
Okay.
Get all the building permit information, visit, do the site visits, take the measurements, take the pictures and then bring that back to that person and those sixteen hours would be used to input that new information into Trio. Uh, right now, that's, we've got two things going on. We've got three, three years of, you know, she's done a significant amount of work in the time that she's been here. Uh, a lot of stuff that hadn't been picked up is picked up, um. Uh, there's stuff out there that has not been picked up, but with that said, by the time it gets picked up. We're gonna have all the new information from the REVEL. Uh, so we might be in a unique spot where we're starting with a fresh slate. So to speak, because we've got, we'll have new data. It'll be current and then moving forward, it'll be good. Um. With that said. If you read some of the Sun Journal articles about the REVEL in Oxford and some of the other towns, there's. And and just my conversations with Clint in Cape Elizabeth who just went through it, there's a lot of data to be reviewed. There's a lot of. Information to digest and I've got a very limited staff and I'm anticipating that. I'm gonna be doing a lot of work. In addition to what I'm already doing as well as Alyssa and um Brittany, just getting through all of that data. Um. There's supposed to be a bridge from Patriot over to Trio. To take the data that they put into Patriot. And get it into Trio because we have to commit out of Trio because that's what we use. Um, my understanding from the conversation I had with the Oxford Town Manager is that bridge does not exist yet, so there, so. Without a bridge, what do you have to do? You have to manually enter all that information. So. Yes, I don't have an answer as to. How much time would be required to get caught up because I don't even know what's coming my way yet. Uh. And. It it just from what I've seen of the other towns, I mean, it's it's a project. It's not just a matter of them going, here's your new assessments and it's in the system and everything's great. Uh. So. But for the bare minimum, we need somebody to do the pickup work. Each year. So it may behoove us to simply put out an RFP for an assessing agent to do that pickup work, so that we have that data. Moving forward, whether that be a three-year agreement, uh, we used to use um. Hennessy and Associates, I think is what it was called, uh, he's kind of wound down. And. Doesn't seem to be interested in in in. Doing it anymore for the for town, uh, for whatever reasons. I mean, I think he's getting older, but. We need to have a plan. Because. Without an assessor. Uh, I need pickup work. I I need, it's, yeah. I think, I think Hennessy used to do like, come and pick them up. Right before commitment and do everything because it's up to April first, do everything. Uh, usually one or two weeks at max. They just come in and do all the work and drop everything off and then it was up to whoever was inputting the data and putting it in. Uh, I think it is. Nice to have. A certified main assessor doing that work, just two eyes is better than one, but we definitely need. A CMA to at least do the pickup work by Hennessy.
Yes.
So it would seem to me that. Um. Without any pressure, because I don't want her to in any way feel that we want her to leave because certainly she could. Stay a long time if she wants, but I I understand. Why Colleen would want to wind this down, but if we could figure out when it is. She wants to leave or she knows when that is, the sooner we can advertise. The better will be.
I'm bringing this to you now.
I don't like the idea of saying the office staff will just pick up the data entry because.
It still needs to be signed off by an assessor. And. I'm bringing this to you now because we we really need to figure out what we're gonna do, um, you know, we're we're kind of in. Weird waters because we had the board of assessors, we had somebody that had done all that entry, data entry for years. And then we voted to go with contracting with a certified main assessor. Now, some towns. Have that assessing agent do both parts, you know, they they do the pickup work and they also. Obviously costs more, come in and do, you know, however many hours, eight hours a week or whatever to do the data entry or, well, the trio, they can do it remotely, they don't have to be here, um. But I mean, we know how much it's gonna cost, I mean. Colleen's pretty loyal and I know she'll stick with it as long as she has to, but I think she's, I mean, she said it to me a few times, it's pretty clear that, you know. It's a lot. Forty hours over there and then having to, I mean, we get constant, people come in here, want to talk to the assessor on a daily basis, so town bucket doesn't have a full-time assessor. You know, we document everything, I keep records, it goes to the assessor, she deals with it when she can. Whether it's on the weekends and evenings, whatever, um, but. Unfortunately, with the way we are, you know, we don't have, we don't have a demand for a full-time assessor. And with that, we can't offer health insurance, which is one of the contributing factors as to why, you know. She did what was best for her and I I supported it. I totally don't blame her one bit. But. We need a plan.
Hmm.
Yeah. Yes.
So. One plan would be, or what I'm hearing is hiring assessing agent, I'm sorry. No, it feels like it's wide. Huge hope. We need to do something because it's eight o'clock. Was it eight thirty?
Thirty is.
Yeah, thirty, so cut off. Sorry, I didn't want her to lock the door so people can get in.
And maybe we don't. Maybe I don't need to understand all of this tonight, but it's almost, what are our options? For hiring people? Oh. And maybe then we can look at pros and cons because it looks like. Either way, we need an assessing agent and those would be the people who actually go into the field, personnel people, correct? Or I'm trying to understand this and then the assessor. Is the person who enters the the data, answers questions. Pulls all that information together.
Signs, signs all the documentation to commit, yeah, all the assessments and everything, yeah.
So we have these two different roles that need to be filled and that.
Well, it potentially could be one.
Okay.
I just don't know what it would cost because again, in the past, it's been a board of assess. I just don't know what it would cost because again, in the past, it's been a board of assessors, an assessing agent and then, and. I guess you call it assessing assistant. But the Board of Assessors signed off on it. We don't have a Board of Assessors anymore, so we don't have that. To sign off on that stuff. So like I said, the way it's worked the last two years is we've had a certified main assessor. That's basically done. Everything and at the end of the year, when we commit, they sign off on all the paperwork because it's their. Their license.
So if we did not, if we could not find. Someone qualified who wanted the job for sixteen hours a week to be the certified main assessor. For the town of Buckfield, what would be another option to look for an assessing agent who could also fill that role?
And be the appointed assessor for the town.
So would it make sense to advertise for a certified main assessor for the sixteen hours a week? And. Put out RFP for an assessing agent and then when we put out that RFP for an assessing agent, also ask them. What it would cost for them also. To be the certified main. Assessor until the time that position was filled. Does that make sense?
You do that without arguing two options. They could bid on both options. They could bid on one option. Um, I mean, you'd be free, we'd be free to decline. Any of them, but. Just to see what's out there. I mean, a lot of these assessing agents, like I think it's O'Neill or O'Donnell, but I think is what some readers, I mean, they do a lot of towns. This is a whole new world for me. This is. I hate to see her go because she has been very helpful and very, she's done a lot of work. And like. Truthfully, I think we've, not we, the town has has taken it for granted, uh, the amount of work that has been done, but. Lorna had a vision of what things were gonna look like. And it just all fell into place for her and now I'm kind of in this impasse of, okay, I guess I gotta figure it out, so. I really wanted to just kind of gauge all of you and get your input and I have no problem putting an RFP together and putting it out there. Doesn't, it's, it's sort of like the ACO job though. It's like. We might get some bites, we might get no bites. And then a month from now, we find ourselves in the same boat of what are we gonna do?
I think we need to advertise for certified main assessor and. Also. See what we can get for bids to do. Either part A or part B or part A and part B. And then going into the next budget cycle. Have an honest conversation about. Can we do it in sixteen hours? Can we do it in less? Do we need more? What, what do we need? That's for next budget cycle. So what do we need to do to advertise for that position and?
I'd be interested to see what she has to say. And she's smiling. Let's get her mute herself. There you go.
I want to make sure that the board that's here understands that. I know we keep talking about, we used to have a board, we have, used to have a board of assessors. I can guarantee you. As a past board member of those assessors, we did absolutely nothing but sign paperwork. Okay, so to go back to that direction would not be wise unless you all plan on learning a lot. About whether or not the paperwork is done complete because there was a lot to it. Second would be. This bid that you're putting out, a recommendation would be to go to the assessor agent page at Main Revenue. And take a look at where these people are actually living and doing the work and maybe actually possibly thinking of doing an invitation to bid. Instead of just putting it in the newspaper. That there are people that are in, you know, that are in Holton, Maine are are not gonna be somebody that's gonna come down to the town of Buckfield. And are not gonna be interested and putting it out in the newspaper. I don't think you're gonna get the. The clientele or the focus of what you're looking at. So there's a great spot. On the Maine State Revenue Service as an Assessor Agents page. Those are all licensed people here in the states. And some of them are actually from out of state, so big enough town, I'm sure they would have come into the state, but that might be a thing. We do that in construction all the time. It's called an invitation to bid. There's nothing illegal about it. It's no favoritism. It's just. Kind of focusing our money and our focus on people who we think would actually. Come to Buckfields and be able to economically do it. I've glanced at the page. Closest people around us are like Richmond, Litchfield. New Gloucester, other than that, they're pretty far out there. Uh, we don't have a good assessing agent that that's here, even. The Hennessy, I think, was from Bath, I think, if I remember correctly, but um, that would be something to to look at. I think if we just get a good assessing agent. Yeah, we can get started at least that way. It's my, my thoughts.
And and with that said, I think uh, back when this whole thing happened and we got rid of the Board of Assessors, which I personally, as a taxpayer, think that that was. A good choice because I was on that board, um. I think Lorna had spoken to one gentleman that was interested in doing it and I. If I remember correctly, he wanted six hundred dollars a day. That's not even feasible for the town but. That was just one person, but now there are some unrealistic.
And along the lines with what Martha said. Perhaps we also look at who. Is contracted with some of our neighboring towns.
I think the invitation to bid idea sounds really good, but if, you know, you were looking at the amount of hours that this lady was putting in and it was more like twenty to twenty-five hours a week. Would it be worthwhile comparing some of the bids presented to a full-time employee might cost and then sort of padding? The tax assessment responsibilities with some other things that might be useful around town, sort of in the same wheelhouse or skill set. If you're gonna pay a full-time employee forty thousand dollars first. An agency who wants to charge, you know, above. What maybe they, sort of what they can get away from the smaller town, maybe have to travel farther with armor of any of them and they're already being, you know. Tasked to their limit.
And again, I mean, the hours that that. The current assessor we're, we're putting in was a direct. Result of the last. Two to three years. You know, the last time we had a signed agreement with. Uh, Hennessy was. I believe two and a half years ago, which was about the time when the turnover in the town office was a mess and. Nobody knew what was going on, so. You know, you're constantly trying to catch up with that backlog. And every month, new transfers are coming in, new sales are coming in. Um, you're trying to prioritize because you need to make sure that everything has an April first is correct before you get, you know. So it's. You're tanguing of what needs to be done. Uh, I don't anticipate it's gonna be like that. Forever. I, I mean, even a year, a year and a half from now, I think things are gonna be a lot better. The revel will be done. The valuations will be in there. Everything from that point forward is just pickup, pickup work, transfers. Splits, you know, it's, it's where we were five years ago, four years ago, three years ago.
Yeah, but it, it may be worth looking at. The goal is to get back to sixteen hours a week. But it would seem to me that if we got caught up. That would be that much more quickly, we would increase the revenue. That the town receives, so it may be worthwhile to say. For the next year or the next year and a half. We need somebody to full-time and and that's again, a discussion for the next budget cycle. But with the goal of, we don't want somebody full-time forever, but let's get caught up. And what do we need to do to get caught up? But seeing that we don't have the budget for full-time right now. Yep, let's at least get somebody. Qualified to do this, so our office staff is not doing all of that as well.
I just don't want to see us fall back.
Exactly.
We got good, good momentum going on and I'd like to maintain that.
Is there anything we can do to help to?
Yeah, pull an assessor out of the sky for me and say, here you go.
As far as. Researching who we should. Invite to bid or.
I've been on that assessing agent list before because I was curious as to how many towns some of them were doing. I know. I looked at the one that Sumner uses just to kind of gauge. But I will, I will look at that and I still gotta get. I still gotta get it together and get the verbiage and everything correct. Before I invite anybody to bid.
And then there's also the job posting.
The gentleman, the gentleman, can I say one more thing? The gentleman from Sumner does Sumner, Turner, Hartford, Hebron, Jay, Livermore. He is in our neighborhood. That might even just be a little telephone call ahead of time. Just saying.
Thank you, Martha. I just wanted to make all of you aware. So that we know where we're at and kind of. I mean, I'm gonna, this is the direction I had planned on going, but I wanted to discuss it with all of you because. The end of the year is coming up and if she really does want to be out of here, I don't want to hold her up. Then overwork her any more than she needs to be.
That's right. Thank you. All right. Emergency management administrator.
Sorry, I think this is supposed to say director.
Yeah.
Yeah.
My bad.
Sorry.
Fresh out in the minutes, please.
So. Viv has been, uh. Well, Viv, why don't I just let you take the floor and kind of explain it. I, I currently on paper. I'm the EMA. I'm not the lines and nims. I need, I need to be, uh, but after the last meeting, Viv came and saw me. Uh, she has a lot of. Nims requirements for that position. Um, and she came and asked me, I think she had some conversations with, with Sandra and, and she's asked if.
She said she'll be willing. To accept the role. As emergency management director if. The board. Wanted to put her in that position and like you said, we have had some discussions and I am. Thoroughly impressed with the amount of knowledge and. Research that. She has and she's done and um. Some of her ideas for moving forward to not only being in compliance, but. Actually move towards. Doing the, what this is intended to do and be prepared. For emergencies, um, it would really serve this town well. And there's, there's training and responsibilities that we all have that I don't think. Most of us are aware that we need to do and not only. Has she pointed out to me what I need to do, but it's also given me the. Information I need to get it done, which was super helpful rather than just go do this, but you need to do this and here's how, or let me help you. And.
I, I haven't done, I haven't been able to attend any of the EMA meetings just simply because of the workload that we have here. I mean, they're usually in Paris.
Yeah.
Would I love? To, I, I just, there's so much that I need to do in order to get in compliance and, and I mean, she's already taking the initiative to. Figure out what training she needs to do, which we actually have more in classes than I do, which is funny, but. I think having somebody in that role that is willing to do that work. And give it a hundred percent as opposed to. Yeah, let's just make sure we're in compliance and just toss it aside. At times occasionally, I think it would serve Buckfield better.
Absolutely.
Yeah, much, uh, much of that does correlate to federal grants too. Yeah, that's, that's the thing.
Viv is one of those people that can. Take something that's really long. And give me the. The tidbit of information that I need to know. So that we can, you know, instead of me having to cite for Drew. A ton of information, she can summarize it for me. As long as I keep her away from a pen. So she, she came to me and she asked if I thought it was a good idea. I said, I thought it was. I know she's spoken to Sandra and that's why it's on here. And I'm sure she'd be willing to answer any of your questions.
Your thoughts, man?
Number ten, on the back, your agenda is emergency planning. I really did not like. Knowing that the town was not Nims compliant. And also in addition to that. Missing out on the Homeland Security Grants or the FEMA Grants or whatever other grants are out there, you know, having to pull up. Old warrant for forty thousand, why don't we maybe get some federal money through the state for that presidentially declared disaster? I want to just be perfectly, perfectly, perfectly clear. That if you appointed the EMA Director. That my goal will be. To foster as much teamwork. With you all, because I am nothing without this board. Without you, honestly, I mean, when you. delve into the programs, the grant stuff and everything else. If this process is a complete community process, that's all there is to it. So it won't just be me working. It will be me working towards helping the entire town, including the board because you have ultimate authority. Become. Able to make the decisions should we have an ice storm or. I'm not even going anywhere else because it's too recent, but anything comes up, but it's building the community. So that we are. Way more prepared than we are. Cameron gave me the. Uh, emergency management notebooks. We updated the one page as best we can, but we now have a new update. Because Peter's on the board. Uh, I updated another page. I did get. I'm, I'm moving forward with this appointment. I will have to be sworn in. I will have to take the same G four oh two. For elected and appointed officials, we will work together. I am absolutely convinced that we can be Nims compliant. By April first, twenty twenty-four, if not sooner. I would like it to be sooner, but realistically, the one course that I absolutely need, the NIS eight hundred. Is a hundred and thirty something pages of written texts, not counting the exam. So I don't want to put that pressure on myself for January first, um, but the April. You know, that coincides with some other town dates and so on and so forth. And along the way. We, royal we here, not a vid thing, it's a we thing. Will build a team and be more prepared. Than we have been in the last, at least last four years, because this stuff has not been updated, not been looked at. Some of the languages, it doesn't even include active shooters, you know, so. By appointing me, I can get connected with some other people. My. Weak link in this is the computer aspect. You'll maybe be pleased to know, I now have a computer tutor. I now have. A G, a, a different Gmail account than the private one at the library. Um, so I will be able to do some work at home. I'll be able to do some work at the library, but I will need. Some town of resources and. And I think that's fair to say that you should know because. Copies will be, need to be made. You know, a few other little things, but I'll be in here working, but you'll be able to reach me. And if you have questions, I'll.
Yes, Sandra.
Yeah, I make a motion.
Yes, please.
I would like to make a motion that we appoint Vivian as the emergency management director. I would like to make a motion that we appoint Vivian as the emergency management director. For the town of Buckfield. I would like to second that motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Bob I?
Azalea I.
Heather I.
Sandra I.
Peter Roy. Thank you, Viv.
Well, thank you guys and remember you're gonna be willing to do this.
Yes, too. Yeah, thank you. Really want to stand up and cheer right now.
The, um, it's the emergency management agency and. In, in FEMA in and of itself alone. Department of Homeland Security or any other government. They're very technical about their management, as to say, director, am I right, Bob?
That's absolutely true.
Which is, I noticed right away, he said, no, director.
Yeah.
Can we get her a hat?
Those classes are wicked fun.
Should make them fun.
Yeah.
We, the very first one is G four O two for elected and appointed officials, it's a two hour thing, we'll have a blast.
Yeah, and there ain't even, there isn't even a test. I took mine in Paris, they were supposed to have two classes. They canceled after what happened. Uh, you probably already have that one.
I'll send you on my stuff.
But I think the other four of you will have to do that one.
I did one thing in Paris.
You did it, yes, she's in compliance. So just.
So fine, you should check against the topics if you need to.
Yeah.
And then. Did you do the sign off sheet when you were elected on FOIA? For information, oh, you took the class.
Not yet.
Oh, that's on the twenty eighth.
Yeah.
So when you're done with that, I'll need a certificate, I'll have to get you. There's two ways you can do it, you can sign up. And take a workshop via Zoom or whatever through MMA when they hold it, or you can review. You can review it online and sign off on it. So I'll give you both options and I think you did it. Yes, and you did it as well, so it's just you.
Is it too late to have him go to the same workshop as me?
I'm gonna do a Zoom on the twenty eighth, uh, we have a meeting on the twenty eighth.
Right, so it's.
Yeah, we're already missing you. I'll look at the schedule for MMA and see if they have any other ones available. Or just get you the information, but yeah, it's just reviewing all the. Which Heather's been scheduled for this since before.
Like a couple days after I was elected.
It's just.
This was just. For our newest member to be aware. Writing it down.
Wasn't in the paperwork, was it?
Judy's raising her hand.
Yes, Judy?
Yes, well, I was a little bit concerned, I heard somebody was busy on the twenty eighth. And I wanted to mention to you that Deborah Alden, the school superintendent, is coming to talk. To the select board, I don't know at what time, I think it should be put out because, you remember, that's the largest part of our budget. What we spend on the schools and sad, uh, RSU ten is struggling. They have a, they have a big meeting on Friday, did anyone know? At, at Mountain Valley High School and they're going to have twenty presenters about drugs. Anyhow, I, I, I just want to be sure that people can attend it, uh, the meeting with Deb Alden and, and can you tell us, um. Uh, Cam, what time it's at?
It's gonna be during our regular meeting, it'll be, it'll be under the, uh. It will be under old business, so it'll be one of the first items on the agenda. Uh, and I did send a reminder to. Deb as well as the two, um, school board directors, Aaron will be here, Deb will be here, Allison said she couldn't make it. But, um, so we'll have one of the directors and. Deb will be here. She did ask me if there's anything in particular that you would like her to be prepared for. I know I hate coming to a meeting and be. Ask questions that I'm not prepared for, so, um, obviously what sparked, some of this was the, uh. Around building and ground maintenance at, at the high school, um, I don't know. What other updates you would like her to be prepared for, so. If you do have those and you could get them to me as soon as possible, so I can get back to her so that she can be prepared, that would be great.
Yes.
Would this also be a. If community members had questions that they would like addressed. Is their best bet to email them? To you or to.
As I say, if there's, if there's issues they'd like addressed with the RSU, they should send those directly to the superintendent. Um, if they send them, they can send them to the school board directors as well, just so that they're. Aware, uh, but the school board directors are instructed to send that information off to the superintendent, so.
But if there are things that.
They'd like to.
Folks are planning to come to the meeting and ask or information that they'd like at the meeting.
They can send.
If giving. The questions ahead of time would. Glean more information, that would be.
Yeah.
A good idea.
The more prepared she can be, the better, that way, I mean, like I said, I hate being black eyed of the questions I am, I'm not prepared to answer.
Because the intent of this is informational, not.
It's a hot day, there, there hasn't been a lot of, um, and it's not on the RSUs. It's, it's not the RSU or the town's fault, with everything that's been going on, communication between the RSU hasn't been that great. Over the last couple of months, um. I have reached out to the RSU, I've done, I did the walkthrough with the assistant superintendent, the principal. Communication has been great. And I think we're just looking to. Improve that. Communication between the town and. And the RSU, because not everybody can drive up the road from Mexico to the real meeting. Um, and. School board meetings are a lot different than select board meetings. And if you read the. School board manual, director manual, there's. A lot of things that. Basically, once, once the school board director is elected. The, the manuals from the lawyers, they should say that you don't represent the people that elected you. It is how I, I interpreted it. So it's, it's a different environment there, so this may be a better environment, just to have an open forum that. Someone might not feel comfortable talking about at a giant RSU.
Yep.
I, I know that. Community members. Often question. Why we all came together? If it would not be wise for Buckfield to. Remove themselves from the RSU, what could be the. Consequences of that, I don't know if that's anything that people would want to ask her about, but I know that that's a concern. That the town has and how is being a part of the RSU beneficial. For, for Buckfield, I. I get the sense that people feel that their money. That they pay to the school system is not. Going to benefit. The students from Buckfield, and I'm not saying that's the case, I'm saying that's a concern or a worry that people have because. Um, as was pointed out, it's the biggest part of our budget.
Yeah.
And there are some areas for the kids that. Maybe I was lacking.
So we'll have to vote to extend the meeting here. Want to say till nine? What's that? To what?
Business.
Oh, to business finish, great. So I'll make a motion that we extend the meeting until finish, business is finished this evening.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, any discussion? Paul is in favor, Bob I?
So yeah, I. Sandra I.
Peter I.
Thank you. Yes, Martha?
It, it goes back to the, the, the FOIA stuff. I don't know, maybe I was only half listening, I'm doing other things as I'm listening to you. Those meetings that you're talking about, you do not have to actually attend those meetings in the state of Maine. What you can do is on the FOIA page, there's a section called frequently asked questions. If you read that. And sign off on the sheet that's there, there's a little sheet. You can do it either way, you can go to a meeting. Or you just read the fact sheet. Understand it and sign off on it, it's that simple, that's how I did it. So, in case you want to go to a meeting, that's cool too, but in case you don't have time for that, there is a way to just read it and get it done with.
The meetings are, uh, the workshop is beneficial, I did take the workshop when I was a selectman. E- either or, you know, it, it. Whatever you prefer to do. You just gotta do one or the other.
Yeah, give me options.
Within a hundred and twenty days of being voted in.
Hundred and twenty, there you go, got plenty of time.
Twenty days. Yeah, so the ones, you know. That's what I'm saying, some of you that have kind of gotten lengthy, it's still a hundred and twenty.
Right. Moving on, thank you Viv again.
Are we talking, Ava?
I bet. Uh, twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three tax collector settlement.
Alright, so lean work is completed for twenty twenty three, um. So I've got the certificate of settlement. For, uh, the tax collector for twenty twenty three, she's just committed to twenty twenty four, but we're supposed to do this every year, so. I just need a vote to release her from, um. Twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three. Uh, because once she's filed her lease. Her obligation is met. Hopefully that made sense.
Believe so.
Yeah, once, once the tax collector does the lean work, they've ensured the town's interest in, in that tax money. So now it falls on the. Treasure. But that's okay, she's got a whole nother year now.
So what's the wording that I should use for this motion?
More than to release, I, you used her name, Brittany B Parrot. From the twenty twenty three tax commitment.
Last name again?
Parrot, like the bird with.
Parrot, thank you. So I would like to make a motion that we release. Brittany Parrot from. The twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three tax collector settlement.
The tax commitment.
Tax commitment. I will second that motion.
Thank you, any discussion? All in favor, Bob I?
Azalea I.
Heather I.
Sandra I.
Peter I.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brittany, great job.
Yes.
And thanks for the smooth as possible.
Alright, we come to the public comment period. Are any public comments? Yes, Judy?
Well, I did have one suggestion, I made it to Cam and to Peter. We, we're going for this resilience grant. And I know that we can't get money for everything we'd like to do, the town office being the most important. But they wanted to know how we're looking at resilience in other areas, and as I tried to cross the street. The one seventeen a couple weeks ago from the post office to Tilton's. I was swamped. By traffic. And why is it that we cannot have a crosswalk put in? We have both. Uh, the post office, the parking lot and the marijuana on one side, and we have the library in Tilton's on the other. And that is a very dangerous crossing, and I do believe. That traffic has increased, so I would. It's just, it's just something we should look at. Um, I do notice they've got them all over Paris and Norway. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy.
And part of that. One, one of the hurdles is that it's a state road, right? What's the process for?
So.
For something like that.
I rely pretty heavily on, on Weldon to communicate with DOT, um, we actually talked about, uh. Well, a couple things, you need the state's blessing to be able to, to do that, even though we're the ones that are going to be responsible to paint it, maintain it. Um, so there's, you know, all the different divisions, there's traffic, uh, I can't remember what the. The department, Weldon contacted, um. Arthur, the guy who covers this area about possibly taking our speed sign and putting it either at the, at the. Parking ride. Or over in the bank parking lot, the former bank parking lot, um, but in order to get. To do it and make sure that we don't upset anybody with the state, he has to contact his other department, so he's currently in the process of that. I'm assuming that's the same department they need to contact about if they could put a crosswalk in there. Um, it's a conversation I gotta have with Weldon, I mean, it wouldn't be super expensive, it'd just be paintings and stencils, but, um. It's. I don't have a good answer for it. I did pass her information off to Zach after the meeting when she brought it up, so Zach's aware that she brought it up.
Yes.
Judy is not the only person who has brought up.
Yeah.
How fast people drive. Through town, and I don't think that simply. Painting a crosswalk would really make a difference because a human in the road. Does not make a difference when there's a vehicle coming through town at fifty miles an hour, and people are asking, what can we do? To slow traffic down. And I, I don't know what the answer is, I think a crosswalk with a light. That would force people to stop, to let people cross the road, but I, I don't know what the process is for that. Unity, I think we need to. Start talking about it.
Did you call on me? Yeah, um, it is a big, it is a big issue because it's a state road, so that would be totally out of Buckfield's hand to start with. They would have to look at the traffic patterns, they look at how many people are populated in that town, the businesses that are near that area. All of that would have to be marked, it has to be so far away from intersections, if you wanted to do a light that is completely like. Beyond probably what Buckfield would be able to get. But everything has to be ADA accessible as well. There, there's a lot to it, it has to follow the MUTCD, they're making changes in twenty twenty four, so they're. It'll be coming out in twenty twenty four and there were some updates to that, so. As much as I would like to say, let's rush it through, I'd wait at least a year, but we can get the ball rolling. But everything would need to be compliant and, and it's, and it's not as easy as, as, as just putting some paint down, I wish it was.
Yes, Judy?
Yes, I know, I do agree, I know it's not easy, but I've been looking now, as every time I go into Paris and Norway. And there are an incredible number of pedestrian crosswalks, some of them with yellow lights and they're not even near important buildings. Which surprised me. Um, I, I miss, we, we have not, it's not just important buildings, but that's a dangerous intersection. And, uh, we could, what we could do is put signs up for people coming down. Down the road, if we had, if we had a pedestrian crosswalk, then we could put the signs up. You know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Caution pedestrian walk, uh, crosswalk ahead. Just a suggestion.
Still have to get the state's blessing.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I think there will be few people who disagree with you, Judy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So is this something we could all? Kind of think about and. Put under old business. On one of the next meetings to really look at. Steps. To start this process. Sounds like first step is Weldon, reaching out to his contact at the DOT. Is that correct?
Yeah. Like, I can't remember what the, the guy is that covers this area, what his actual title is, but he's retired in December two.
Maybe he'll tell us the process, because what we don't want is first step. Dealing with the person who just got hit in the road. I'm watching people dive for the. Sidewalk, I've done it. I think most of the people in this room have had to. Dive for the sidewalk more than once, yeah.
I definitely think traffic in this town has picked up over last.
Oh, yes.
I mean.
Which wouldn't be a problem if people stayed at twenty five miles an hour.
Right.
Right.
But the people who hit forty and fifty. Going right through the middle of town, especially in big old trucks.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It gets scary.
We've been lucky.
Very, we've been very lucky, so.
Right. Any other public comment? Okay. Executive session, so. We are going to go into executive session this evening. Pursuant to one MRSA subsection four or five six on a personal matter. We enter executive session.
Let's go.
Are you leaving for the night, Viv? I am, thank you. Thank you. This is for my, yeah.
So do I have to make a motion and then we?
You make a motion.
Alright, so I'll make a motion that we. Enter executive session pursuant to MRSA. Or pursuant to one MRSA subsection four or five six on a personal matter.
I will second that motion.
Any, any discussion? All in favor, Bob I?
Azalea I.
Heather I.
Sandra I.
Peter I.
Thank you.
See ya, well, everybody's in this room, so Martha, I'm just gonna, if you're gonna stay. See ya, well, everybody's in this room, so Martha, I'm just gonna, if you're gonna stay, I'm just gonna mute and stop the video, and then we'll come back after.
Crying when we come back on.
Should we all be crying when we come back on?
We'll try.
We'll be coming out at nine twenty four.
Try and sit back in the building now.
Hello?
How do you know?
I hate Zoom. That's what I mean, look, it just. Everything's squeaking out up here, I don't know what's going on.
It says this recording.
Okay, the microphone's moving, yeah.
All right, the matter of executive session at nine forty two. Um, time.
Twenty five.
Nine twenty four, nine twenty four, I'm sorry.
Put them around.
Yeah, I know what I mean.
I uh, I will, I would like to make a motion to agree to amendments to Cameron Hinckley's employment contract.
I second that motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor, Bob I?
Zelia I.
Heather I.
Saundra I.
Peter I.
Thank you, and I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I will second that motion.
All in favor, Bob I?
Azalea I.
Heather I.
Saundra I.
You're uh, thank you everybody.
You should have been at nine twenty five.
I adjourned, nine twenty five, thank you.
Sorry, don't leave, I guess since you was on.
The pieces are blue. So listen to me. Please stay at seven hundred.